It is five o'clock, sharp, and we will begin this March 4th, 2019, meeting with the invocation. Reverend Leonard Cook of Saint John the Theologian will lead us in our invocation. Thank you, sir.
Our Lord, our God, we post for this meeting to ask thy help and thy guidance as we go about the tasks that we are about to undertake. We know that we can do nothing without thy help, and as we consider the business about us, let us strive and strive with thy help to do thy holy will. We ask thy blessing especially upon the members of this council, those who will take part in this meeting. We also want to remember those who are affected by various weather conditions, that throughout the country, we thank thee that thou have spared us from most of the grievous things. We want to ask thy blessing especially upon the sickness, suffering, all the employees of this city, all the citizens of this city, and as thou would grant thy peace which is beyond the vicinity, throughout the entire world, forgive thee the glory, the power, and the praise, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, both now and ever, and unto ages of ages. Amen.
Amen. Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin our study session this evening with communications and reports. Any council members have anything?
Yes.
I do. And this actually has come as the result of several calls from citizens, and the most recent meeting of the Red Star Neighborhood Development Association. In Ward One, we're dealing with a lot of illegal trash dumping, and it's something that I just want to bring forth to be a bigger conversation. Right off of 177 at North End, there's an area of the road that just seems to collect every 32-ounce soda cup that anybody feels like they want to drop out of their car. Right at Big Bend and East Cape Rock, or Cape Rock, there's another place where people, now there's a headboard in the weeds, and all kinds of stuff. And then people have been dumping Christmas trees and everything down in the flood buyout area, and so it's just a conversation that needs to be had about, you know, how we are as an attractive city, we are an incredibly attractive city, but whenever you see a heron standing amongst 16 Styrofoam cups floating in some floodwater, it doesn't look too pretty on your drive to work. But I've gotten a lot of calls about it, and it's something that just needs to be remedied, and we need to figure out how to moderate it for the future.
Has the neighborhood, the NDI, thought of having a neighborhood cleanup thing this spring when it warms up a little bit, maybe on the weekend?
Absolutely, that's always under consideration, you know, so we always talk about that, and I know several of our members actually have just gotten out and cleaned it themselves. You know, a lot of times those get out and clean it themselves. You know, but we've got some other members that aren't capable of doing that. They're upwards in age, and they don't feel comfortable parking on the side of the road, especially right there at 177 in Cape Rock, and getting out of their cars and putting themselves in that way, so it's just rough. I've always joked around, whenever the water gets high right at North End and 177 at Sloan Creek, you can almost take a pool skimmer and go and skim off all of the Styrofoam cups because they float to the top. So, but it's a conversation that needs to be had, it's something that I keep getting calls about, because people are just tired of seeing it. People are tired of people that are homeowners and citizens, and love their neighborhood, and want to see the best for their neighborhood, they're just tired of seeing some people take advantage of it, and then it just sits.
Well, and you've got other areas around the city that a lot of people just let trash gather up around their house, too, and they don't take advantage of the cities, you know, Wednesday special pickup once a year that doesn't cost anything to them.
Yeah, so it's just definitely something, and it's something for future conversation and discussion, to see how we can best serve our neighborhood, and our neighborhood NDI's to make sure that we're taking action on those items.
Good. Somebody else?
I just want to mention, I want to formally thank the Community Foundation of the Ozarks. Sure you all are aware of the April 10th elected official in county government urgency preparedness, and that was helped take form via a grant that Ozark Foundation did for $10,000. So, I wanted you all to know that, I serve as a liaison to that group, and work with them on their board, so.
Several of us are signed up together to that, so.
Steady increases in the foundation, so thank you to them.
Anybody else?
A few things. We have a few announcements. First of all, Citizens Academy, I know many of you council members have agreed to be part of that, and we thank you for that, but the first, very first Citizen Academy in this iteration will be Thursday night, March 7th, and it'll be about City Hall. Mayor's coming, and welcome everybody, and we're going to get to hear about budgeting, yes! Everybody's excited about that, but it's exciting and exciting that we're going to have another group of about 20, plus or minus, citizens that want to know more and deeper about how citizen and how city works, and so we're excited about that, starting this week. Also, Youth in Government Day, Youth in Government Day is March 29th, Friday, March 29th, and so we encourage you to come and welcome students who are going to be some of your roles, being council members, and mayor, and then also city managers, and attorneys, and department heads, and so that will start at 8:00 on the 29th, Friday, the 29th, and then it culminates with a mock city council meeting at 10:00, and then lunch at the Jackson Knights of Columbus Hall at noon, so love to have you come out for that. The River Campus, I had a River Campus meeting this last week, and we talked about upcoming activities. The River Campus in summer has a Summer Arts Festival for children and teens that can actually perform in a production. Children have one of the productions, I believe it's Aristocats, and then Newsies is the teen one, and so it's a way for our community to be a part of that, and of course, we've invested tax dollars in that, and like to have anybody that knows of anybody that has a flair for the art, they also have an art camp, and dance camp, and all that, that's also out there available. Those are kind of week-long camps that are targeted at people who want to take a deeper dive, and a lot of people come in from out of town, it's actually a residential camp for some, and if you're in the town, you can go to that. So if you're interested in more of that, just let me know, we kind of have that going well, and. Oh, we have the statewide tornado drill. Mark, you want to tell us a little bit about that?
I've had a couple lead-ins already with this already.
Yeah, appreciate that.
As well as Councilman Guard, is our statewide tornado drill is tomorrow morning at 10:00. We do an internal communication event that basically just tests all of our communications within the city, our phones, radios, as well as emailing, texting. We will also sign our sirens tomorrow, rather than Wednesday, and again, just kind of reflecting back over this weekend, you know, well over, I think, 20-some deaths have occurred down there, destruction half a mile wide, I don't remember how long it was, they even took out a firehouse down there, so I guess you have to watch out for that a little bit. And as far as city council, Councilman Guard, regarding the April 10th training right now, preparedness, preparation, is really the responsibility of the city council, and so you have, as well as now, and in the past, have really supported all of our emergency management, and I think that also would show on that April 10th, on your involvement with preparing our community, your community, in the event of something as disastrous as occurred in Alabama. So tomorrow sirens will be going off, hopefully we'll have a meeting at that time, we'll have a brief discussion about what we as department directors would be doing in the event of a tornado, so we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. I believe that's all I've got, Mayor.
All right, good. Not much as far as the mayor's office goes, we had a magnet meeting this week, and I was privileged to be a part of the Old Town Cave 20th Anniversary Celebration. I was also there as part of the Trio Program Celebration with CMO and their scholarship recipients and recognitions, and that was also a fun night. Otherwise, everything's moving along, so we'll just go from there. We have two items for discussion this evening. We've talked about various city goals throughout the year in our study sessions, and tonight we're going to talk about our goal of improving neighborhoods, and we're going to have an update on the NDI that we've got, and also on Purpose Built Communities, so. Who's up?
Alex, or?
Alex, Brian.
Brian, okay.
Evening. Okay, well, it's, I'm proud to report that the NDI program is now in its fourth year, so it's hard to believe, time's really kind of flown by, but it has been four years, and we've had some new faces on council since that time. The presentation I have tonight is very similar to the one I gave at the city council meeting 2003 years ago, 2016. That meeting was held in the Red Star District, so for those of you that were there for that, this will just be a review, but then for those of you that are new, this will hopefully be some new information for you, and we have incorporated some updates as well. What's that? Okay. So, the Neighborhood Development Initiative was created after the 2012 Citizen Survey, citywide survey, and it sought all sorts of information from the public as far as what they would like to see improved in the community. A number of the issues that were identified, or the problems that we have in neighborhoods, crime, vacancies, deteriorating properties, and so from that, the city manager came up with the Neighborhood Development Initiative, had a goal to develop a program to improve our neighborhoods, which has now led to your council goals, and so this program was created, it's aimed to address all these issues, other issues in neighborhoods. The key is providing information and resources, and having a platform for discussion, so it's intended to be very productive, it's not just to be a complaint session, or, you know, what have you done for me lately, why is this not getting done? We do hear a lot of that at our meetings, Dan Preston is involved with the Red Star NDI group, but it's really intended to be very positive in tone and very productive, so that's kind of the purpose of it. It is a citizen-based program, but the city does facilitate it. Why NDI, you might ask? Well, many of the issues we face can only be addressed at the neighborhood level, and Mayor, you kind of touched on that here, when Dan brought up the issue of the trash in the community, you merely went to, you know, what's the neighborhood doing to kind of help improve that. So, there are some things that really need to be addressed at the neighborhood level, and so that's one of the purposes of the NDI. As everybody knows, we're a pretty good-sized city, we do have a lot of good services, but we can't be everywhere at the same time, whether it's public works, police, fire, you name it, we just can't be everywhere at the same time, so that's more of an impetus for our neighborhoods to really step up and take their initiative to try to help improve themselves and work in the areas themselves. Last point there, NDI relies on those who live, work, and play in the neighborhoods, work together with the neighborhoods, and with the city to discuss the issues, learn from each other, and formulate strategies, taking action. My goal of the NDI is strengthen our neighborhoods, make them safer, more attractive, more active, and then of course, the process is really kind of an interaction between the residents and the city. We're here to provide guidance, we're here to facilitate, but ultimately, you know, the residents are the ones that really are involved in setting the agenda, and developing the programs and the activities that they want to conduct. Benefits of NDI, having a unified voice for the neighborhood, so you have groups coming together, reaching an agreement as to the issues that they have, and being able to present one voice to the city. Improved communication among neighbors, if folks are getting together on a regular basis, they're obviously going to be able to communicate better, and be better informed about what's going on in the neighborhood, be more aware of decisions that are made affecting the neighborhood. Both Dan and I come to go to the Red Star meetings, so I think we do a pretty good job of making the residents aware of things that are coming before the council, or projects, initiatives that the city is working on that affect them. Neighbors get to know each other, we do have a social event in the Red Star Group at Christmas, we have a Christmas party every year, so part of it is also just for socialization and getting to know each other, sense of community, having a uniform identity for the neighborhood, and then neighbors are able to advocate for their family and friends, and I don't have time to tell you, but there are several examples that Dan and I've seen of neighbors that are really cared for each other, and supporting each other, advocates, so it's pretty well. Organization structure of the NDI, when we first started, we just had a steering committee, it was consisting of the city staff, and that's where we developed the program. We presented it to the council at the time, before we got the blessing to actually launch it. What we have now is, right now, One Neighborhood Association, the Red Star Group, that's actively involved in the NDI program. We do have the South Cape, too, and as I'll touch on, that's really morphed into the Porch Initiative, so that's really kind of, it's NDI, but it's kind of taken a different path. But each neighborhood, that group that meets is called the Neighborhood Association. Now, once this program, you know, expands into other neighborhoods, then you could have what's called a Neighborhood Association Coalition, which would be a regular meeting, either annual or more often is necessary, where you could have the leaders of those neighborhood associations come together and meet with the staff, and just share, you know, it's a platform for sharing, you know, what they're working on, what they've learned, tips and things that have worked well for them, just kind of keeping them, each other in the loop. Okay, so we talked about, one of our charter neighborhoods was Red Star. The steering committee that helped develop the program made the decision to start small, one or two neighborhoods, but they looked for ones that had a lot of potential to show that improvement, so Red Star was one of those, and it was based on the fact that it does kind of have an identity up there, it does have community involvement with the activity center and the church, and again, the potential to show the progress. This, a map that the Red Star Group came up with, that kind of shows the area, what they considered to be their neighborhood boundary, purple there, there's the Red Star Church in the lower left corner, and then the upper left is the old shoe factory, for those of you that have lived here for many years. It's been rumored that the neighborhood is named after one of the products of the shoe company, Red Stars. So, the program kicked off in Red Star in early January, with the city hosts in the meeting, city manager, councilmen at the time, staff were there to kind of explain the program, and call to action essentially is what it was. We were fortunate to have several folks come forward that were interested in taking on a leadership role, and that has been critical to the success of that particular group. They quickly organized, they set their boundary, their meeting locations, generally, they've been meeting every month, they take a month off every now and then, but they've been very faithful, one meeting. It's a small group, but they're very dedicated, and like I said, they do have a lot of discussion, and I think it's very productive, and then the staff, my name and myself, provide the support of the group. I have a whole list of accomplishments, I'm not going to read through them all, but essentially, you know, one of the important things that has come out of this program is the ability to communicate well with the city, whether it be city departments or staff, you know, at an individual level. I think the group has really learned a lot about who to talk to when they have issues, and how to present that information. So, they've been very successful on that, early on with the Public Works Department, back when they had the flood, there were railroad ties that had been moved in, you know, been moved by the waters and left in the flood buyout area, they were able to work with Public Works to get some of that stuff removed. There's a lane change at Big Bend Road, just as you cross Sloan Creek. And they perceived that to be dangerous, so they worked with Public Works to have some warning signage installed there before you cross the bridge. Working extensively with Parks and Recreation Department for better maintenance of the flood buyout area, and also have been pushing a lot of the improvements at Cape Rock Park, which they're very fond of. They've been involved in, again, like I said, talking about Cape Rock Park, you know, the Marines have their flags flying there now, along with the American flag, that was something that they reinstated, and Red Star supported them on that at the dedication ceremony for that, along with the pedestrian bridge over Sloan Creek, that now next to the riverfront trail, they were there for the ribbon cutting for that. So, they've really tried to, you know, be supportive of all the different events that are going on in their area there. As mentioned, improved communication, development services, police, nuisance abatement, they've really been working closely with those departments to, you know, address the various issues that they're having. And then a couple of years ago, the city received some pro bono planning hours from Benchmark Planning, and that money was used to develop a concept park for the flood buyout area, they used a public engagement process, and they really sought out input from the residents and the community at large, and based on that, the input they received was that even though the neighborhood has, Cape Rock Park is small, it's kind of confined, and there's some topographical constraints, it's not really functional for kind of a mixed-use, you know, active recreation-type park, and so they really felt that this area would be good for that type of park, so the planning consultant Benchmark developed a concept plan for that. And then, really, in the recent year, we were having some issues with theft, with some of our businesses up in the area, Great Lakes dredging being one of our main businesses there, and there was issues with them, you know, the thief was kind of sneaking in behind the building, and hiding in the woods, and then adjacent property that was overgrown, and so we had some residents that were actually working with Great Lakes, and with the police department, and the neighborhood property owner to kind of get that area all cleared, and that allowed the police department to be more effective in tracking down the thief. So, I mean, they're hitting it on all different levels, and they're continuing to go strong. I know Dan's probably got a lot of comments he could share with you at some point, but suffice it to say, Red Star is, I think you can be very proud of them to be a good example of a successful neighborhood-based program. The other neighborhood that I mentioned was the South Cape area, and that, we did start into the NDI, the traditional NDI model with them last year, actually a couple of years ago. There's a group there called Authentic Voices that was interested in kind of leading that, and so they had a series of workshops throughout that year, we had city manager, and representative of the police, and our different departments there. They did a lot of visioning, they were really trying to discern kind of what some of the South Cape residents feel, or the issues in the neighborhood, and they were able, from that, to generate a list, I believe that they gave to the city manager, and so, again, that has kind of morphed into the Purpose Built Communities now, and the Porch Initiative, and so I think that list is one part of what they're going to take on, but I think they're going to accomplish a lot more. Any questions?
Well, there were several cleanups in South Cape, too, that residents and other organizations participated in, and that may be one way to help with Red Star, I know there are other churches and organizations in town that helped with that effort in South Cape, and I think they'd be willing to do the same in other areas if that need is there. That's just the way our community comes together to help other people in the community, and I think it's been great.
What's the very first steps if the neighborhood is interested?
Well, they need to contact the city, obviously, and express interest in it, whoever they contact will probably get them in touch with me unless they contact me directly, and we kind of have a conversation about, you know, what they're perceiving in their neighborhood, what they want to accomplish, and if there's, you know, some folks there that would be willing to lead that effort, that's a critical component of the program.
Yeah, we've developed a, because we didn't really have the resources to do the same level of support for every neighborhood that wants to do that, so we developed a concept called NDI in a Box, and so this is a concept that we're getting ready to roll out, and it would, it has kind of how you start as a group, and then, and has a set goals, and it's really, the purpose is to be self-governing anyway, it's they would have a contact person, and then we encourage them to use the software next door that allows them to communicate with each other, and we've talked about having, providing them with trash bags twice a year, and then do two pickups twice a year for their neighborhood, if they will organize it, and then stack all the trash bags in one place, we'll pick them up. So, that's kind of what we're looking at for an NDI in a Box to roll out, I don't know exactly when we had determined if we'd roll that out.
Kind of talked about in recent weeks is kind of developing some sort of package, packet, something that could be given to somebody interested.
So, if you have a neighborhood that's interested, I think that's probably where we would try to encourage people, is that first entryway is kind of a NDI in a Box, if you will, and we'll be ready for that soon.
And there might be, say, another specific neighborhood in Red Star District, or some other district, that's not really been part of this yet, that wants to participate, too, so.
Yeah, you know, the Red Star neighborhood, I've been a part of it.
It's a big, it's a big area.
Oh, it's a huge area, yeah.
There are separate neighborhoods within that area, so.
Yeah, there's little sub-neighborhoods and everything. I've been a part of that organization now for probably three and a half, almost all four years, that the NDI's been in existence, and we meet dedicatedly every month, and the second Tuesday of every month, in the Fellowship Hall of the former Red Star Baptist Church, which is the Church of the Rescued and Redeemed now. You know, but that's needless to say, we meet, we talk, we take action, we do a lot, but there's still a lot of frustrations that represent to our neighbors, one of which, you know, like I mentioned earlier, is trash, it's always an issue on, if a person who is not the property owner of a home piles their front yard with trash, you know, if we can build, as a city, you can obviously build the homeowner, and it just, weird little issues like that just seem to pop up, and they stick around, and then it's multiple weeks of large piles of trash places. We've had a rough go of it over the past couple of weeks, we've had incidents on green acres, and we've had, you know, the person that drove into the water down at the Red Star flood buyout, but at the same time, we've got some of the best natural assets that this city has in the Red Star neighborhood, we've got beautiful views, and rolling hills, and a wonderful housing stock, and excellent access to Riverfront Park and the trail system, and so there's just a lot of great. And so there's just a lot of great perks, but our residents just continue to get frustrated with some of the log jams that present themselves, especially when it comes to nuisance, getting rid of nuisance issues or cleaning up those derelict properties or encouraging landlords to take care of properties that they've had for long periods of time. And once again, you know, mediating trash. And so there's just, there are items that still, after four years of being in existence for the NDI, are still constant frustration and headache. And so we're just always working to make sure that we get those issues presented, you know, as much as we can, we pull as much attention to them, and that we get them mediated as best as possible.
One of your neighborhood constituents contacted me about a situation he had with a rental property. He had, the person had his three old cars there, and I said, you know, contact the police department, get the proper forms and take care of those. And now he's, the person that had lived in the house is not there anymore, and he's contracted to have somebody tear it down and just level it and plant grass there if he's tired of this money, so.
Sure. You know, the thing, whenever Benchmark Planning did their park planning for us, they did an economic study. And reputationally, the housing stock in the Red Star neighborhood is about 10 to 15% lower than similar housing stock in other neighboring parts of the city of Cape Girardeau. And so if you think about it, the financial incentive is there for these landlords and property owners to improve their places, their residences and the places they own. Because if those people improve their property values by 5%, it could potentially bring them a lot more gain and return on their investment. So it's a great place for the city of Cape Girardeau to pay attention to, because I think for the future and for what we're looking to do in downtown with revitalization, it's a perfect opportunity for the city.
Anybody else? Any questions, Brian?
Thanks.
Nope. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I can cover Purpose Built just real quick. For those that don't know, maybe everybody does know, but Purpose Built Communities' work is kind of morphed from the NDI, and we tried to kind of keep them both going for a while. But I think they're really are becoming one, and so that's been moving forward. The Porch, in the last, in the last year, Porch really came together to form, that's the nonprofit that will actually be the Purpose Built Community representative. The city isn't, they don't allow cities to be members, it has to be a nonprofit. And so Porch has come a long way, and really, in the last year, that's been really key to making that happen. Shelley's been heavily involved in that, and now Stacy is the council representative and involved with that, and they're really, really engaging. Small group, kind of like what Red Star started out with, a small group, but very dedicated. And that's what it takes. That's what it takes, a small group of dedicated people to move forward and make it better, move it forward. So Purpose Built Communities uses a quarterback group or the Porch Group on a defined area, which we have a defined area on the south side of Cape. And they use three things to improve and address generational poverty. First one is cradle to career education. And so we're really fortunate that our public school wants to, once they found out that there was a different way of teaching folks who are in generational poverty, and there's 42% poverty in this area, according to Census Trax, and that they found by going to Drew Elementary School that they had to learn to teach kids differently who are in generational poverty. And they said, we're going to change the way we teach. And so they've been doing that. Well, that, the way that is, is called, they're calling stream. And so it's a different project-based way of teaching, but they're well on their way of doing that. Leah Ragsdale is the principal there, and they've got a whole new staff that they advertise and get people that wanted to teach this way. They brought them to Jefferson, and they're seeing huge gains happening at Jefferson. Education is extremely important, but it's just one part of that three-legged stool to prop up generational poverty. Second one is health and safety. So this is about all the work that's been done by police, where they are out and doing coffee with the cops and getting their names out there and building trust with the residents so that they call not when something happens, but before something happens. And they are active and build that trust, and it helps them to solve crimes. If you notice, we were able to solve a lot of the crimes a lot quicker because people are talking and have that trust. So that's continuing to build. And so that's the safety part. The health part is really about things about trails and parks and Aquatic Center and Shawnee Center and all that's going on there. We already had a lot of assets there and using them. And Julia and her folks have changed some of their programming to be a little more what the youth in that neighborhood are asking for. So they've made some big moves in that direction. And of course, with the stream initiative and the new bond issue, they have an aquatic center that's potentially to be located there and at Jefferson School along with the other early learning center. And what's more critical than teaching kids right early and getting them off to a good start, so all those things come together for, to career, for college to career, and then health and safety. The last one is mixed-income housing. A lot of work being done behind, you know, to try to reach out to people who are in the housing industry and talk with them about how do you do mixed housing? It's a little harder because you're trying to reach people at different income levels, but it's critical in addressing poverty because if everybody in a housing complex, if nobody works because they're all on housing assistance, then that's the culture you're in. If a third of those people get up and go to work every day, and a third of them go, you know, have part-time jobs and are working, and a third of them don't, it's much easier, much more attractive to people to migrate to become the people that work. And so that's part of that. There's a whole lot more into that than just that example part. That's really important. We are really lucky that there's a new opportunity out there called Opportunity Zones that we think will allow us to help capitalize a housing startup and a housing project. And so we're having conversations with people about that. And so we really are moving forward with all three components of the model that will help us address generational poverty. When you take on generational poverty, that's something that doesn't happen overnight. It takes, you know, a decade or two to really affect the change. But every place that Purpose Built has been, where they have done it for, you know, seven, eight, nine, 10 years, they really start seeing the effects of it. They start seeing kids graduating. I always tell the story of Drew, because in Eastlake, when they started, their graduation rate was, I believe, down in the 20s or 30% of the kids were graduating high school. Last year, they, every student, every student graduated and every student was accepted into college. I mean, they all go to college, but they were all accepted, and that's their, that's their standard, for that they want all kids to go all the way through to graduate high school and be accepted into the next level. That's turning it around. Now, that's 20 years to turn that around. But, you know, when's the best time to plant a tree? 20 years ago. When's the second-best time? Today. So that's, that's really what's happening with Purpose Built. I think a lot of good is happening. It kind of came out of NDI, and we have all these different programs to try to address neighborhoods in different ways. We're still learning. We don't, you know, it's still frustrating, I know, for Red Star, because there are things that take a long time to address, and sometimes we drop the ball, and, you know, we don't like that, but sometimes that's the case. Sometimes it just takes a long time to do things because you have to legally give them time and notice and all of that. But I think there are a lot of accomplishments that have happened. I think focusing on neighborhoods is still a good strategy for our city to make our city better.
Scott, can you talk about the, where the Porch Group is in the application process and kind of fill us in on that?
Yes, the, to become an affiliated city, you have to, you have to enter into an official agreement with, with Purpose Built out of Atlanta. And the things that are necessary to do that is each of these goals, each of these areas, each of these three areas I talked about, each have goals. So their goals are to improve their test scores, to improve their graduation rate. And so they set goals, and then they have to have ways of measuring those goals. And they're very, you know, they're very statistical. They're not, they're not touchy-feely, you know, they're, and so they're in the process of trying to look at establishing those, they have models to use. And then the other thing they want to do is how are you going to do that? And the how involves hiring an executive director. So they're trying to raise money to, for an executive director as well as establishing these goals. Because we have such a good start with the school, I think the education goals are going to be, you know, pretty easy to establish, and they are testing their children and all that. So I think that will be, be pretty easy to establish. The safety goals are things that we already measure. The housing goals are things that are measured by the Census Bureau, but we, we're probably a little bit behind on that, but establishing the goals, I think, won't take too long. So I said all that to say, their goal is to be an affiliated city by the end of this calendar year. Whether they can get it done or not, that's probably a little ambitious, but we, you know, we would like to see that.
Okay. Well, and I ask because I've heard a lot of people out there who have, and are still very eager to see how far along they are with that.
Yes.
Scott, can you, yeah, can you just speak about the Opportunity Zones a little bit more? Is that strictly for housing, or is it, it can touch on into retail and whatnot?
Absolutely. Opportunity Zones are, can be used for a variety of things. The biggest reason they, biggest thing is they have to be within that Census Track. So there's so many Census Trax that have been nominated and approved by our state, and we have the two that are right here that have been nominated and approved by the state. It can be used for a variety of things. Actually, it's real, real broad. We looked at it for housing because that was one of the big needs of the three bigs. But you could also use it for businesses, which is also an important part of getting businesses into the area, so you could capitalize a business with it. The thing about Opportunity Zones is they have to have a strategy and they have to have a plan because you actually do pay back the loan. It's a real loan, so it's not like it's a grant. So you have to have a methodology that pays, pays that back.
It's like a deferred tax.
Yes, it helps the investor. The reason the investor isn't necessarily looking for a lot of money, a lot of interest back is because they, it helps them on their capital gains. So if they have a capital gain of, say, a million dollars, the tax on a million dollars would be maybe almost half of it. So if they can avoid that capital gains, that's a huge investment right there, even if they just get just the money back and don't make any money. But they want to see how are you going to pay the money back? And so that's what we need to work on, is the strategies for paying the money back and then getting some of these businesses in here that want to use them. And, but it's very wide what they could be using.
Is utilizing Opportunity Zones all around their, their area and the outskirts.
Their PBC.
And using PBC as well.
Well, I heard on a national newscast, there was a US senator from South Carolina that was talking about, I think it was in Columbia, South Carolina, where the Opportunity Zones have been, have had a huge impact on some, you know, low-income areas.
Trying a lot of people that want to invest money in something that is worthwhile, that does something, is not just like a shopping center, it's not just like this, or building something. You're investing in communities and you're investing in redevelopment, which spurs economic activity and spurs, you know, better living conditions, and it's, it's, it's an investment that is worthwhile.
Yeah, if anybody, if anybody knows of anything they would like to do in the south part of our town, that, you know, come to us because, or check it out, because Opportunity Zones are a great way to raise, to raise funds to make that investment.
If Opportunity Zones are such a great way to raise funds, is there a way to get other neighborhoods classified as Opportunity Zones?
You have to meet the, you have to meet the threshold, and so that is that. And there has been talk of allowing them to spread more, because when, we got the impression when they were establishing that you, you know, like one city couldn't ask for more than two, and so we asked for two. So yes, if they open that back up, we'll be asking for the rest of ours, which I think are two or three more, if I remember right. Yeah, and it does, part of it is on the south side or on Red Star area.
Current Opportunity Zone, William Street, South Cape Highway, east, right across.
Yeah, William, William, Kings Highway, everything east of there, to the south side limit, I believe, what's currently. Is that right?
Yeah, they're here.
Yeah. It's a great program. Good question. Do you think they had, because I know you've been going to some of their...
No, no, I think Shelley probably is, would be the better person to speak right now, but I'm looking forward to digging in very soon, yeah.
I know we've been talking to the Ozark Foundation about maybe taking them under their wing, and so that's, I think, something that's a possibility going forward, too.
Good, good, good. Any more questions? Fantastic. I think that concludes our presentation on improving neighborhoods.
Yep.
Are there any appearances this evening for any item that is not on the agenda? Anybody who wants to appear before the council for any item not on the agenda? Lots of people racing to get up to the podium, so we'll move right into our agenda review.
Okay, we have, we have no presentations tonight. Have our consent agenda, items two, three, four, and five are the second and third readings from last time. Item number six is a record, record plat, I believe, no, performance guarantee for the Highlands at Hopper Crossing. So this is a typical thing we do, rather than paying a bond for this developer at Hopper Crossing Phase One. They also have a record plat of Phase One on the agenda. Number seven is subordination of a deed for, at 2436 Masters. This is over by Alashawar School. We have a program whereby we help people do improvements to their home, and then the loan for that becomes a second mortgage for them. These folks would like to refinance their first mortgage to a lower interest rate, and this just allows us to allow us to stay in the second position instead of taking the first position. And we've done this several times. It's good for the owners because they end up paying off their own sooner or having lower payments, so that's what we typically do. Number eight is licensing an indemnity agreement for playing, placing decorative pots along the light poles on Spanish Street for Old Town Cape. Number nine is an agreement with ALG Engineering for our engineering services. If you recall, we advertised for a city engineer, have not been able to fill that position, so we're asking to contract with ALG or LA Green to provide that service for us for the next six months with a six-month option, and see how that goes. We have, number 10 is the agreement with Boulder Construction. This is to do the masonry for Kappa Hall Park next to the splash pad. We have a restroom there, and then it has room to also put the equipment in for the splash pad, the pumps and stuff. So that's what that one is. We think bid that out a couple of times previously. This one finally came in where we're comfortable awarding it, so glad for that. Number 11 is a, 11, 12, and 13 are all grants from MODOT for police enforcement of various things, hazard moving violations, so that, that looks at areas where we have, or conditions where we have a problem of accidents and allows us to do additional enforcement there. DWI is for, to set up stops and those things, and then the last one's a seatbelt and child restraint enforcement. Then number 14 is the capital improvement program. We've had this out and discussed it, we had the public hearing last meeting, and I wanted to just quickly go through kind of some of the changes that have been made as a result of the discussions that have happened. We did change the two downtown parking structures from Riverfront Development Fund to be determined. We added signals at VMD and Kings Highway. There was a lighting project out there, but with that diversion diaphragm, we're also adding signals, so we have agreed to that. So we had agreed to that in order to get the diversion diamond project programmed with MODOT. So we put that in the CIP. We removed the $50,000 project to preserve the cable TV connection for council. Talked about that. And then we changed several of our projects that we identified as TTF six priorities for a list of about $16 million worth of projects. These are kind of staff's recommendation for, as you look at TTF six, the ones that we think are the highest priorities for that amount of money. Obviously, you're going to go through a process to determine those, but this just kind of sets that as where those priorities are. They can be changed because it's all still in the contingent program.
Some of those came from TTF five that weren't included, so they've been identified. They just weren't priority then.
Right. They were, they were things that couldn't get done last time, so. The airport priorities, we put some of those priorities as potentially able to be paid for with the airport improvement program. This is the program that allows us to, if we get the 10,000 boardings, so we identified some of those as well as some of them to be done with the capital improvement tax that might be considered in the future. And then we did change the city hall projects a little bit. We changed it down $12 million. $12 million will provide the amount of square footage we currently have in our, so we took a smaller approach to that and put that at that amount and identified different sources for that money. And then we also noted the $16 million in contingent water projects could be passed as part of the capital improvement tax that might be considered this fall. And then we confirmed about the Fort D project. So those are the things that are different in the CIP, and wanted to just point those out. Their draft for tonight and asking for your approval to approve the capital improvement program tonight. No, removing. Any question on the consent agenda items you'd like to remove or...
I just want to make a comment on the draft. You're looking at future projects, but I think it's important that we look back at the progress we made in 2018, 2019, and look at the completed projects that were done, the streets, parking lots, runways, with stormwater, with water assets, and IT and facility. There's a lot of things that were completed this year that really amount to a big, big thing. And I think we ought to commend the former councils for recommending those and staff for following through and make sure they're completed. So that's a big deal. There's a lot of them there.
There really are, and we want to keep that momentum going, and that's one thing we think CIP has really matured over the years to be a guide of that and to help things bubble up through, and we get a lot of public input, but it helps us prepare for that and manage those projects in a way that we're able to actually deliver when it comes time. Thanks for that.
Any items removed from consent agenda terms? I'll entertain a motion then that we approve the consent agenda.
We're going to have to, we're going to have to start the meeting first.
Oh, yeah, we do have to do that first.
I can go through the new ordinances though quickly. We do have a record plat at Highlands of Hopper Crossing. I kind of got you a stop there for you.
You kind of got a stop there.
Yeah, sorry about that. So the new ordinances, we have the record plat for the Highlands of Hopper Crossing. That's phase one of that. 16 is the no parking there at Forest. That's right across from McDonald's off of Broadway. We have people that park right next to Broadway. It makes it hard to see, so this makes no parking sign that moves them back a little extra. And then applying for executing air traffic control tower operating assistance grant that we do each year, I think it's about $165,000. So it's moving forward with that. And then I think you have three appointments tonight, the Airport Advisory Board, Board of Adjustments, and the Town Plaza Community Improvement Improvement District.
Okay. Now that's...
There you go.
We will convene to regular session, have a call to order, and roll call. Ryan Essex.
Here.
Bob Fox.
Here.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Victor Gunn.
Here.
Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Shelley Moore.
Dan Presson.
Here.
Are there any appearances this evening from anybody for any item on the agenda?
The adopted agenda.
Yeah, we do need to adopt the agenda.
We have to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any appearances this evening for anybody for any item on the agenda? If not, we'll move to the consent agenda area.
Bill number 19-30, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for traffic signal repairs at Williams Street and Southwestern Boulevard in the city of Cape Giraffe, Missouri, and ordinance authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for traffic signal repairs at Williams Street and Southwestern Boulevard in the city of Cape Giraffe, Missouri. Number 19-33, an ordinance pending Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Giraffe, Missouri regarding signs, an ordinance pending Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Giraffe, Missouri regarding signs. Number 19-31, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for repair of South Sprig Street in the city of Cape Giraffe, Missouri, and ordinance authorizing city manager to execute the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the repair of South Sprig Street in the city of Cape Giraffe, Missouri. Number 19-34, an ordinance pending Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Giraffe, Missouri regarding driveway spacing requirements, an ordinance pending Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Giraffe, Missouri regarding driveway spacing requirements. Number 19-35, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a performance guarantee agreement with Simo Development LLC for the Highlands at Hopper Crossing Phase One in the city of Cape Giraffe, Missouri. Number 19-36, resolution authorizing city manager to execute a subordination of deed restriction with First Missouri State Bank of Cape County for property located at 2436 Masters Drive in the city of Cape Giraffe, Missouri. Number 19-37, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a license and indemnity agreement with Old Town Caping for installation of decorative flower pots in city on lightpoles along Spanish Street in the city of Cape Giraffe, Missouri. Number 19-38, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with ALG Engineering LLC for the engineering services in the city of Cape Giraffe, Missouri. Number 19-39, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Boulder Construction LLC for Mason 3 for the Kappa Hall Park Comfort Station in the city of Cape Giraffe, Missouri. Number 19-42, a resolution authorizing grant application to MODOT for hazardous moving violation enforcement and authorizing city manager to execute all necessary grant documents. Number 19-43, a resolution authorizing grant application to MODOT for DVI enforcement and authorizing city manager to execute all necessary grant documents. Bill number 19-44, a resolution authorizing grant application to MODOT for seatbelt child restraint enforcement and authorizing city manager to execute all necessary grant documents. And bill number 19-45, resolution adopting the 2019 to 2024 capital improvements program in the city of Cape Giraffe, Missouri.
Move to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion been made in second to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New ordinances. Bill number 19-41, an ordinance approving the record plat of the Highlands at Hopper Crossing Phase One. Motion by Robbie, second by Stacy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19-40, an ordinance admitting Schedule F of Section 26-247 of the City Code by establishing no parking anytime along a portion of Forest Avenue in the city of Cape Giraffe, Missouri. Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 16, or Bill number 19-46, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an air traffic control tower operating assistance grant agreement for the fiscal year 2019-20 with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Cape Giraffe Regional Airport.
All those.
Motion by Victor, second by Robbie. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have some appointments scheduled this evening, appointment to the Airport Advisory Board. And after tabulating those, that is Justin Davidson, and this appointment is to fill a term for Paul Mingus, who moved to Arizona, whose term expires, I think, the end of April this year, at which time we will reappoint or appoint somebody else. The second was Board of Adjustment, and we have elected to reappoint Timothy Kelly as a reappointment to the Board of Adjustment. We had a third appointment, two other appointments this evening to the Town Plaza Community Improvement District Board of Directors, and we're going to delay that appointment for one big reason. We've had a lot of complaints about Town Plaza's parking lot and Town Plaza's street through there, which is Plaza Way. There are a couple of potholes out there that are three and four feet wide and a foot deep. And before we appoint to the CID Board of Directors, I would like council, I'd like staff to contact the CID and report back to council on what their plan is to do the repairs. I think we ought to, we ought to make sure that we have a plan in place to know what they're going to do to, number one, fix the pothole so people aren't tearing their vehicles up, and number two, maybe for a long-term plan to do it and do it right. So they are a CID that collects a sales tax to make improvements for that district, and I think it behooves us to make sure they get it done. So we'll postpone that until we hear from them and know what their plan is. Need a separate motion for each appointment and then the delay?
We can have one motion.
I will entertain a motion for the decision.
I'll sort of move all that.
Bruce, did you get that? Okay. Any discussion?
Ryan.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the delay on the appointments, I mean, I've received a number of calls, and I've driven through Plaza Way myself, and I mean, to say it's a pothole is an understatement. I mean, it's a cavern.
It'd be a crater now.
I mean, it's a cavern in the parking lot, and it needs to be dealt with before someone gets lost in it.
Well, the sad thing is it fills up with water, and then someone's driving along and they see that water, and they don't think anything about it, and then all of a sudden they hit it, and the hoo, kaplunk, and, you know, someone's going to lose a tire there if they're driving very fast.
Well, I think you said it, they're collecting a tax to improve it, and that's what they need to do.
Right. We'll contact them and get that information to you. Okay. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other business?
Nope. You have going to expense memo's and advisory board minutes also attached, and all we got?
I will entertain a motion to adjourn from regular session to convene and do closed session for legal actions and litigation, confidential communications with legal counsel, and personnel issues pursuant to revised section, Missouri Section 610 dot 0211 and 3. Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.